Yeah, I got most of my like carrots and cabbage, all that kind of.
You said carrots?
I was vaguely kidder missed. The girls love them. Yeah. We had a couple decent ones last year because we have some raised beds that are pretty, pretty fluffy. So they did alright last year.
And we can add more.
That's a cool times. It's okay.
Oh, my girls love them. My one, my two-year-old, yeah.
Make that the center.
Well, my two-year-old, she loves like, like, like doing the shell stuff. More of that because that's where I'm just sitting by with him is the only thing in a shell and she would just sit there and like.
Like it's great. Yeah. Go to town.
Um, she just really likes, you know, my husband's very mechanical and she just really likes motor skills.
Yeah.
Are you saying they didn't? Girls not ready for.
Whenever.
Like a basic white one on.
Yeah.
So they're not coming up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back. Good luck.
Six and seven-year-olds.
Yeah.
You get two of them.
They try to do it together.
Yeah.
Maybe the other team was.
We're not paving your roads or putting your ground.
But at least we don't.
Basically.
They were scoring on this.
The kids don't care.
It could be on the.
Off the roads as you every, every five years.
Basically like. It's key down. My oldest, she is.
On the manhole by accident because they didn't have covers on.
So apparently.
That's terrible. That's, that's the greatest on there.
Kind of like.
People live there again.
It's so hard to make, make them do it. Let me crawl back clear.
That one on like that exit off seven forty-one? Oh, up by Rutt's.
Eleven years down, even with escalations on it, move what's us going through now.
Yeah.
Send it over. Really? Well, with her continuing the education, I can plant the payments as long as she's a full-time student. That's fine.
Well, you probably, you probably get tired of wait.
Yeah.
And say, okay, when I'm gonna go, they don't see somebody falls.
That was eleven years.
Five, I think, in that area.
We like to go to Rutt's pretty often.
Do you?
But sometimes.
Take the back road?
Start yelling at him.
You wear their shirt off for.
Nope, nope.
I think seven forty-one most of the way.
Okay. Seven two. Yeah. Ready Cindy? Evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the April thirteenth meeting of the Easthamfield Township Planning Commission. Please join me in opening the meeting with a pledge to the flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One of our regular members is not able to attend tonight's meeting, so I've asked John Spangler to be a voting member for the session. The first item on the agenda is to take a look at the minutes from our March ninth meeting. And either accept them or correct them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March ninth meeting.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Mrs. Will, seconded by Mr. Callous, that we approve the minutes of the March ninth meeting as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed?
So I'll abstain Cindy.
So one, two, three, four, five, zero, and one Cindy. Right, the first action item is Commerce Park Lots one and three at State Road.
And good evening, I'm Dennis Reichel with H R G and with me tonight is Dave Gunya from Highview. And before you tonight is the revised final plan for lot one and three. We recently, we received billboard conditional use approval and one of the conditions for that was preparing a revised land development plan. Lot sizes and dimensions have not changed and the use of this have also not changed. The, uh, the billboard was shown located outside of the floodplain, but within an easement. And we were asked to locate the billboard outside of the easements. Certainly that was one of the things we accomplished with this plan. Uh, street trees were previously shown to the south of Yellow Goose Road along State Road. And recently P P and L installed overhead lines in that area. So also with that plan, we were proposing to relocate those street trees to the east of the seven eleven store kind of along the stream port over there. I believe you see about nine trees relocated in that location. Seven eleven is also requesting a modification of the street tree requirement. And so we've also taken a look at that. And essentially they would really like to maintain visibility and sightlines into their property. And also ensure visibility of their pylon signs and their ID signage on the canopy and store. What we had proposed initially was primarily shrubs along State Road. And within the engineer's review letter, he did not recommend approval of that. So we went back and took a second look at that, had discussions with seven eleven to come up with something that may be more agreeable to all parties. And the rendering that you're looking at right here is what we had proposed recently, which is a, a mix of shrubs and ornamental trees. And I believe on this plan here, you can kind of see an outline of where all the pylon signs and store ID signs are located. And so ultimately what we've tried to do is, you know, include as much landscape as possible while also ensuring that vehicles have a clear sight of the, uh, of the signage. Some of the challenges with the site are the, certainly the elevation change along State Road. The site sits approximately ten feet lower than State Road. And along Yellow Goose, there are a number of utilities that we're dealing with. There's two water lines, a gas line, and certainly signage that we're trying to maintain visibility. And ultimately based upon the conditions that we're dealing with, we, we view this as a reasonable request. And certainly this would be consistent with other convenience stores in the area. The, uh, Turkey Hill right to the north of there, that's mainly landscaped with ornamental trees. The, uh, recently constructed sheets to the south of the site is primarily open along State Road. And then I know the Royal Farms as well along Roarstown Road, I think, I believe maybe has a couple ornamental trees placed along Roarstown Road. So I think certainly what we're proposing here is a reasonable request and kind of similar with other convenience stores in their, uh, in their needs to maintain sightlines and visibility into the site. If you have any questions or comments, I would certainly be open to discussing that further.
I don't think there's like more discussion at this, at this point.
Perfect.
So, um, Scott, this is different than what your review. Looked at, right?
Correct. Yeah, I think the submission came in on Monday, so we didn't have time to react to this before the.
So does your, does your recommendation change?
I, I think the idea could be that we could work with them if you'd want to maybe consider a conditional approval and we could work with the applicant to come up with something. I think this is getting, getting closer. We were looking at it here as we were sitting and maybe a couple more of those ornamentals to sort of even out. It seems like there's a cluster of them.
Right.
On the, on the south side, I'm, the thought might be to extend those across the front and then I think we might be, might be pretty close to where, where we were.
The signs you were talking about, is that what would appear like maybe as red rectangles there?
Yes.
On the corner of the building? Okay.
And one of the reasons why we had left that, uh, the northern side of that landscape open a little bit further is certainly any traffic traveling south along State Road could certainly use that visibility into the site to either view the pylon sign or also the signage along the canopy. And the other area that we're dealing with there is the retaining wall that, that area in there is kind of the, uh, the taller portion of the wall. I'm trying to remember the maximum height on that. It's probably in the range of seven to nine foot, I believe. So certainly we were trying to have the trees located, you know, on the lower portions of the site. And then the other, uh, background for that is vehicles traveling north on State Road in order for them to see the, uh, the pylon sign at the State Road entrance, that, that site, uh, angle really needs to be opened up there to ensure signage of that pylon and not be blocked by trees. There was a, a rendering that we included that showed sightlines on that. And I think that was one of the items that we illustrated on there was the, uh, the sightlines along State Road, looking at the pylon sign on at the State Road entrance. And I mean, we're, we're certainly willing to, uh, I think discuss and, you know, things further, but I think this, I think this is getting pretty close to what the tenant's certainly looking for.
Is the signage location fixed?
Yes, it is. The, uh, the pylon signs are installed and all the, uh, the locations on the canopy and store have already been approved by the township. And I know they're already, I believe, in the process of installing that on the canopy in the store probably shortly.
And so the trees that you were would, would eliminate would be the ones continuing north past those three trees on State Road? Is that?
Uh, right now, what you see on that rendering of shrubs along there, so that's correct. We were not proposing any ornamental trees in that area.
But with the original submittal, where did you have trees?
Uh, I believe they were along frontage in that area. That's correct.
Okay. Right. Does anybody in the audience have any comments or questions about this plan? Further discussions from the commissions? And I think we need to put together a motion on the requested variance.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend conditional approval of modification request number one based on continued discussion with township staff and engineer on the location of any additional trees along State Road.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Detter, seconded by Mr. Calledus, that we recommend conditional approval of the modification regarding street tree planning, subject to further discussions with staff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that would be unanimous, six to zero. And now we need to take action on the revised final plan.
His chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend approval of the State Road Commerce Park Lots one and three revised final plan subject to the applicant addressing all staff and engineering comments.
I'll second it.
Okay, once again, we have a motion by Mr. Detter, seconded by Mr. Calledus, that we recommend approval of the revised final plan for State Road Commerce Park, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Yeah. Next up is Happy Trails, eight twenty-three Roarstown Road, waiver of land development request. Yeah. An applicant here? Okay. Okay. Do you want to walk us through what you're doing? If you would, state your name and.
If you could step up to the microphone as well.
Yeah. And, and when you're done, we need you to sign the register here. Cindy, can we blow that up quite a bit?
I'm not the contractor, but I'm the owner of Happy Tales Animal Hospital. I'm Diane Hodges. Um, what we're requesting is, I think, a variance on a land development plan. So to proceed, I think Scott had recommended that. But I, the intention is to build an addition on the back of the building to have additional space for recovering animals. They are, it is, is it, it is technically going to be like a kennel space. But it's not going to be for boarding facility or anything like that. It's literally to recover surgery patients.
We know.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not the contractor, so.
Okay.
It is going to maximize the amount of solid surface we can have relative to the square footage of acreage, I think that the property is. Um, it does have a residential property on the, uh, I guess that would be the north side of the property. There's residential on the south side as well, but the north side is where it's really encroaching on some of the setbacks. Fortunately, as of last two or two weeks ago, I'm now my own neighbor as well. So I did purchase the residential property beside it. Um, but I believe the addition, everything in, within the addition plans are to be within the setback. And it, the property will be surveyed, the conditions were to have the property surveyed, which was actually already in the works without realizing it. But since I purchased the property next to it at eight twenty-nine Roarstown Road, that's already planned to be scheduled to be done next week. So that'll definitely mark the property lines so that whatever, whenever construction can start, there will definitely be markers there set in place. Um, and then as far as the other requests were to have a official site plan submitted to the township after everything is done, that shouldn't be a problem at all either, just to have an updated, updated accounting, I guess, of the building on file. And then the only other thing was construction, making sure that there were barriers and things like that for runoff water. I believe those are the three conditions.
Yep, and the stormwater, just that you, whatever, whatever the appropriate stormwater is, if it's an exemption or a small project or whatever it comes out to be that you process.
Is a thousand feet the, um, the trigger for act one sixty, one sixty seven?
For the, they have an exemption that they're allowed, so they can go. I, I don't know what the lock coverage is, they may be able to go, there may be more lock coverage available, but as far as the exemption, I think that's where you might have been getting.
Okay.
I think you might have been getting close to that. Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's different, different thing, so. So you can do so much without having to really do any stormwater. The township allows you, there's a credit that you get just as being a property owner. So they'll be using that. And like you mentioned, our, one of our main concerns was that the building is shown on this sketch to be right up against that setback line. And I, I talked to, I don't remember his name from quality design. Kevin, yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, I talked to Kevin on the, on the phone this week and, and expressed our concern with that. So if you're having that survey done and you'll be able to offset that setback line, your contractor should be able to, to know right where they can, right where they can go. The E N S is just very basic. They have some basic controls in place on site to, to control what might happen with them digging, digging and moving dirt around there.
We had the, we had the property line surveyed before they did the drawings or the renderings of the addition. Um, the property owner at eight two nine at the time pulled them up and threw them out. So, um, but yeah, they, they are, it was surveyed before the actual renderings were done too.
And then the last item was just that there's a, a survey done at the end, like you said, that, that'll, it's a basic drawing that can be done. You'll sign it and it'll get recorded at the courthouse and then everybody will know sort of that you had approvals to do this and, and sort of how this addition came, came to be. Otherwise, sometimes these projects can get lost with these waivers of, of land development in the, in sort of the recording and the, the processing of this. So, so this was, this was small enough that I think staff felt that it was something that could be processed this way for you.
Anybody in the audience have questions or input? Or the questions from the commission? Ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend the supervisor's approval of the land development request.
Waiver.
Waiver conditioned on the applicant having the property surveyed, getting stormwater management approval and implementation of the E N S plan, also subject to staff and engineer comments.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Will, that we recommend a conditional approval of the modification for Happy Trails, Happy Tales, waiver of land development, subject to the conditions mentioned in the review letter dated April sixth. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Okay, that would be unanimous then. Have fun. Next up is two hundred plain draw, Plain Tree Drive waiver and modification of final.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mike Huckstall with the LA Group. I presented this plan back in January as a sketch plan. And then after that, we received the waiver of preliminary plan application. Since then, we've worked with the township. We received several review letters, improved the plan a lot. And, uh, so just to refresh your memory on the plan, the lot we're looking at is the northwest corner of Plain Tree Drive. It abuts the railroad tracks to the north. To the south is Old Tree Drive. That's where Plain Tree has access from. And then Centerville Road is way off on the left-hand side of the page there. The existing site is two and a half acres in the enterprise zone and over eighty percent of the site is paved right now. The owner of the tract intends to move his established business to this site. It's a wood pallet manufacturing company. And to do that, he's going to remove the existing building and construct a twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifteen square foot building. So the existing building is seven thousand five fifteen. So the new building will be twenty thousand square foot larger, but the building addition will be on an already paved area, so it will not be in an additional impervious area for this project. For parking, we're going to add thirteen parking spaces for the seven employees that are anticipated or that do work for this company. If additional space is needed, they could do it on the south side of the lot. They could get about twenty parking spaces in there, I believe it was, but if they need additional space, they can get that. Currently, there's no parking on the site, so we're improving, you know, that, that condition by adding more parking than is needed. With this plan, we're also going to define the access drives. You can see two access points here. Currently, it's all open to Plain Tree Drive and it's kind of hard to distinguish where the roadway is and where the, uh, where the parking and, um, current trailer, tractor, trailer accesses. We're also going to add buffer plantings along the south and west side. And with that, there's a couple plantings on the east side and trees within the parking areas and shrubs within the parking areas. With this project, we're going to remove about seven thousand three hundred and eighty-nine square feet of paving. So the current eighty percent paving, we're going to reduce that to seventy-two percent. So we can't get down to the seventy percent that's allowed, but we're getting close to it. So we're, we're definitely improving that condition out here on the site. And with that paving removal, we won't have to do any stormwater management. For traffic, there's, since there's going to be less employees out here and there will also be less tractor-trailer trips. Um, so we're going to be reducing the traffic or I T I, I T E trip generation is based on the building square footage and it indicates that no traffic will be needed based on the reduction of, no traffic study is needed based on the ordinance requirements. We're going to be using the existing sewer and water utilities. And with this project, make it happen, uh, we're going to need six modifications. The first one is for preliminary plan. We already gained that approval at the January supervisors' meeting. So tonight, we're looking for five modifications, approval recommendations. So again, just to recap with this, we're reducing paving, impervious area and the traffic. And we're adding additional plantings to the area and buffer plantings and defining site access. Are any questions about the plan? Or the project in general?
When you said you're using existing sewer and water, Glenn showed a lateral connection.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna use the same connection to the main. We're just gonna run a new lateral.
So did I hear you correctly that your coverage at the end will be still higher than what's allowed for the.
Right, in this, in this zone, you're allowed seventy percent.
So does that require any approval from zoning?
No, it was determined that we don't need that approval since we are reducing.
Such a making it better.
Existing condition.
Existing non-conformance is getting better. Okay.
And we do have outstanding approvals from LASSA, so we're waiting on that. We've been working with them, so we should be getting that soon. And with the last letter, I have all the, the minor couple plan changes complete and I'll probably be submitting, submitting that tomorrow pending this approval recommendation.
All right, let's go through the modifications then. Couple of them are recommended to be granted, others are to be not granted, but deferred.
Right.
As we typically handle those.
Yeah, if you like, I'll just go through the list.
Okay.
So the first one, as I mentioned, was preliminary plan. We received approval for that modification. The second one is supplemental requirements, tests and studies. Um, so a lot of that was for an existing or for a new, um, development. So we. So we really don't have to do any of those studies or they're not required. The next one is for sidewalks. So we're asking for a deferral for the modification and we'll defer the improvements to a later date when a project comes along that improves this road with curb and sidewalk. There's currently nothing out there to connect to. Uh, the next one's for buffers and screens. Because of the existing conditions on the site, there's some paving and existing fencing and improvement within the required setbacks. That buffer easement. So we're trying to improve it where we can and we're reducing some of the, uh, the paving within that area. But this was developed forty-some years ago. You know, it wouldn't meet the requirements today, so we're trying to do the best that we can to, to improve the conditions out there, but we can't meet the definite requirement. And then the next one would be curb sidewalk and pavement widening. So we're at, again, we're asking for a deferral of curb and sidewalks and saw that at a later date. And with the pavement widening, the township asks that we pay a fee in lieu of, so in the future, they can do that as a consolidated project. So I was discussing it with the representative from the township engineers office, Nick. So I, oh, okay. So yeah, I was discussing with him to make sure that we had the, uh, the right amounts that, um, for our quantities and all that stuff, just so we can, you know, coordinate that a little bit better instead of submitting a plan and, uh, our cost estimate and going back and forth. So we're on the same page with that. So I'll submit that tomorrow as well. And then the last one was from the stormwater management ordinance. And that's for the thirty-five foot repairing corridor. And that's the same as the buffer easement requirement. There's existing conditions within that corridor, so we can't meet the, the current ordinance requirement. We are meeting it in a, a small area. So the township asks that for the repairian corridor easement and the buffer easement, that we have those easements identified on the plan. And so we did that. And with this current plan that we'll submit tomorrow, we have all those things straightened out.
Just a clarification, maybe, um, on the two that you're requesting deferrals, it talks about fee in lieu of, and milling and so forth of, is that one for each or one fee in lieu of covers both?
It's referenced, it's referenced in both, but it's, it's just one.
It's one fee.
And that, and that's what was, was mentioned, that we, we have sort of a standard unit price for that and then we just come up with, with the actual quantity.
I'm just curious here whether you'd have to pay it twice.
No. We could try, I guess, but I don't know. They might not fall for that one.
It's my understanding that the curb and sidewalk will be deferred to a later date and then the paving would actually be the fee.
Correct. Yeah, the, the way that the, the ordinance is looked at is that the applicant's required to, to improve to the center line with the, with the paving. So instead of you coming in milling out to the center line and putting new pavement in, they collect a fee for that. And then, like you said, it's incorporated into a bigger project when Plain Tree Drive might be paved in the future. So, so that's how this has been historically interpreted.
Your question, both of them will be deferrals, right?
The curb and sidewalk are, are, yes, are being deferred. And we sort of need somewhere to catch that in the letter, so we put it in with those deferral requests about the, the fee in lieu of for the, for the mill and overlay.
But it, yeah. But it's talking about a deferral for the paving as well.
There are pavement widening.
I think the.
Paragraph four.
Streets and sidewalk ordinance is going to have all those requirements in one.
Yeah, because there's, there's a there's actually, there's a curb sidewalk and then widening would be another one to widen it to the full, to the full width. So that's sort of all lumped into the same deferral, like all of that. Again, the, the fee in lieu of is for, from what's already paved to the center line, to go in and mill that off and put new asphalt on it to make it new for their frontage.
So five, but five years from now, they want to, the township wants to widen Plain Tree.
They could call that, they could.
They would be required to do that.
Yeah, to make it though.
Okay, so they are, they're both deferrals.
Yes, curb sidewalk widening.
Yep. Okay. Just want to make sure it got straight. It wasn't copy and paste.
That's all. Both deferrals.
All right, we have five modifications. Couple of them are recommended for, to be granted and a couple are for deferrals, so, and one for conditional approval. So we may want to take these as a couple at a time. Keep it straight.
Yeah, ignore your motion that you suggested motion. It's not correct.
So let's, um, let's take what appears to be modifications one and three first.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of modifications number one and number three to the board of supervisors.
A second. I have a motion by Mr. Deter, seconded by Mr. Spangler. We recommend approval of modifications one and three, subject to the engineers' comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That would be unanimous, six to zero. And now we have two deferrals, numbers two and four.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend a deferral of modifications number two and four based upon the engineers' recommendations in the review letter.
Chair, I'll second that.
Okay, once again, I have a motion by Mr. Deter, seconded by Mr. Spangler, that we recommend granting deferrals for modifications number two and four, subject to the engineers' comments and the fee in incorporating a fee in lieu of with the agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That would be unanimous as well. Now modification number five.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we recommend approval of modification number five, granted with condition, the proposed repair and buffer easement separately described on the plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Deter, seconded by Mr. Spangler, that we recommend conditional approval of modification number five, subject to the staff and engineers' comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? That would be unanimous. So then we need a motion on the plan itself, a final plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend conditional approval of the two hundred Plain Tree Final Land Development Plan, conditioned on the applicant addressing all staff and engineering comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
You have a good thing going there.
Okay, once again, motion by Mr. Deter, seconded by Mr. Spangler, that we recommend approval of the, uh, final land development plan for two hundred Plain Tree Drive, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, be unanimous, six zero.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you.
Thanks, Mike.
Lancaster County Motors?
Ross with Harbor Engineering and I'm here on behalf of Lancaster County Motors. Here for a sketch plan, requesting a waiver of preliminary plan. The property is on the northwest side of Commercial Avenue. Uh, it's two point six nine acres and it's within the enterprise zone. The property currently has a barn, which is vacant, a small garage and some paved areas on the site. We did do a previous stormwater plan that was conditionally approved, I think in twenty twenty, but it was never recorded and they didn't do any of those improvements. That project, just for future, for reference, was to do some additional parking. So the plan that we're presenting now supersedes the previous plan. So with this plan, it's similar in some ways. They're still proposing some additional paved areas for motor vehicle storage, but now they're also proposing a service garage at the front corner there. And that will be considered the principal use for the property since the barn is vacant. The garage is for America's Auto Auction, which is affiliated with Lancaster County Motors. It's not open to the public, so it's a little bit different than normal service garage. They'll have two to three employees, but they'll pretty much be the only people there. They don't have visitors coming to and from the property to get to the garage. Um, we're showing three parking spaces and one ADA space for the employees of the garage. The rest of the parking areas on the site are for vehicle storage and we're not intending to stripe those. They will be for inventory areas only. So basically they'll come and park cars there, feel like another storage area for Lancaster County Motors and for America's Auto Auction. Um, the small garage is getting removed. That was on the, the western side there. The barn is to remain. They don't really have any plans to use it other than possibly storage. So that's going to be considered like the accessory use of the property.
Is, that's the building in the upper, upper center there?
Yeah, it's kind of middle back there.
Upside down.
Yes, correct. With the previous plan, we had assumed ten vehicle trips per day. So with the three additional employees, we think we can still, or the applicant has said they can stay under the twenty-five vehicle trips per day, so that the driveways are kept as minimum use driveways. Um, and there are two existing driveways that come out to Commercial Avenue now. We're proposing to widen those, both of those to twenty-four feet. We're going to look at adjusting those a little bit so that they both come in at ninety degrees. That was one of the comments from David Miller's office. But the other thing that we want to talk about tonight was the location of the driveway. So basically, both of those, we took the location of the existing driveways and just widened them on one side. There was a comment about aligning them with the, um, access drives that are across the street. And I guess let's start with the eastern one. For plan, right, anyway, um, that's closer to the stream there. We would rather not push that anymore to the right because of the repair and buffer easement that's there. So that's why we have the widening shown on the left side of that existing access drive. So I think in order to line it up exactly with the one across the street, we would have to encroach in that repair and buffer easement, which is based on the top of bank. I don't know if there's any discussion about that or questions. Um, and then the western one, we didn't get to talk to DMA about this one yet. If it needs to be aligned with the one across the street, we could either align it to that or, um, we could propose it as an in-only unless the commission is okay with the location as is, since it's an existing driveway that's just getting widened.
So the one across the street is just to the left of the C and, for C and commercial?
Yes. Yeah, it's a little hard to see there.
Right there, okay.
What is across the street? I can't think.
Should have brought an aerial map. I think it's another parking area.
By Lancaster County Motor?
No.
No.
Not that I know of.
They own most of the area out there, so.
Freight miner.
It's not that now. Freight line or?
What says?
You mentioned the driveway on the west side, Amanda. Was there, what was the reason why that one couldn't line up? Was it because of something internal to your site or?
So we were trying to keep the existing location, um, which is like the right-hand side of it is the existing driveway that comes out there. And I think the slopes are a little bit steeper there too. So I know with the previous plan, we had kept all of the existing configurations and just widened it. Whereas if we go to a new location, then does that kick us into meeting all of the driveway standards as well?
Yeah, I don't think that would, I mean, it's basically a new driveway with the way you're, you're showing it. So it would be, I think, whatever those standards are and for width and, and safe stopping site distance are the main things that we look at. Is there a necessity to have two driveway entrances? Be the next question, probably.
I would have to double check.
Because if we're looking at two, I mean, it, it's just a basic issue of somebody turning left out of one driveway and somebody turning left out of the other driveway and they're just offset enough that it's awkward for, for that movement and it's a safety concern. So we, we always try and line the, line the driveways up.
Is there, in the ordinance, is there a access drive intersection separation requirement?
There are some requirements for that, yes.
These meet any of those requirements or no?
I don't believe.
Yeah, I think they're supposed to be a hundred and fifty feet apart, which I know there's another access drive just to the left on the same side that's much closer than that.
What's the space between your two driveways?
Yeah.
Uh, actually, it's, I think it's on there.
I can't see. Maybe somebody.
Hundred and ninety feet, maybe?
It's underlying to center line.
Yeah, I, I would question if you're only talking about ten trips a day or something like that, why one driveway would suffice? That would be my pushback. And then you could have maybe aligned it with the left-hand opposition there by the, what is it, freight line you said?
Freight liners, yeah.
Directly opposite from freight line?
And then just remove the eastern one.
Move the eastern one, then you don't have to worry about the floodplain repair and buffer or anything.
Sounds like a good suggestion. Okay, we would like that one too.
I'll have to check with the client on that one before I commit. We'll be back. I just wanted to get your feedback. So this is all very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, this is just a sketch plan, but it's good counsel.
Yeah, it's definitely something we can look into before we submit the land development plans.
Yeah, I mean, that's going to cost you some money to widen that other driveway, the eastern driveway.
Yeah, because that goes the whole way back.
Yeah, and so, you know, just remove it or whatever, put a curb across it and be done with it. Putting a new one in on the west side probably is not a whole lot more than adding half the width to the existing one, so. Might want to ask them to consider that, because I think that would, in light of the, the low usage, I I have a hard time justifying two driveways.
Okay. Yeah, we'll certainly look into that and talk to them about it and see.
Western one they can line it up across.
If they really want two driveways, would you be okay with the western one being in only? Or maybe, I guess, the eastern one could be too. I don't know if that.
You do the eastern one in only and then you wouldn't have to widen it, right? I don't know.
If they're really into two driveways. We'll look at some options. So a few other things to mention. There will be public water and sewer for the service garage. They are going to extend it back to the barn. They don't have any plans, like I said, to use it at this time, but while they're doing all the site work, they will extend water and sewer laterals to the barn as well. Um, we will have more than an acre of disturbance, so there will be an NPDS permit associated with it. And as of now, we're proposing two stormwater facilities, an infiltration bed and an infiltration basin. Um, so as I mentioned earlier, we're here tonight for the sketch plan, the waiver of prelim. So as I mentioned earlier, we're here tonight for the sketch plan, the waiver of prelim to process as a final plan. Since everything will be constructed in one phase and the land development will include all the necessary requirements of both preliminary and final. I think actually there are three other modifications or waivers that we didn't really include before. I think you had mentioned some, maybe all of them in your letter. Just to mention briefly, we will probably ask for a deferral of roadway improvements along Commercial Avenue.
Sounds familiar.
Same type of thing as before, there's not really anything nearby. And then also similar landscape buffer.
Sidewalks.
Yes, sidewalks, yeah. And then the landscape buffer, similar request, a lot of it is paved already. The areas where we are paving, we'll have room for a ten foot buffer, but not the full twenty foot. So with the previous plan, we had proposed an alternate design for the buffer. And that was approved last time, we're going to do something very similar with some minor tweaks. Because of the very small garage that's removed that was in the buffer area before. So it'll be a little bit different, but in general, the same concept of the alternative buffer for the landscaping. And then we'll probably also have a waiver of the loading ratios for the stormwater. Again, that's all still kind of to be finalized, but that's something that we requested last time as well.
Do we ever request for a second sketch plan? Before we approve the waiver for preliminary, I'm just thinking about the comment earlier about one versus two driveways.
I think the idea with what we're trying to do with these letters is we're formalizing a recommendation on the preliminary plan waiver. And then we're giving some some feedback early on, so before before they go ahead and develop final plans that they that we can have some of these conversations. So I think the idea wouldn't be to have them come back again, but for this, but they'll be back again in front of you with that actual final plan submission.
Yeah.
So you'll you'll see them then and we'll have some conversations with Amanda in the meantime and talk talk about how this might might go the easiest through the process.
Yeah, I mean, I welcome the rest of the commissioners to give their point of view too, but such a thing, the two driveways or just one driveway. I think, you know, that if they if Amanda goes back to the client and they say, no, we want two driveways, then we might have more issues. And to go through the the whole plan preparation.
I think if our client wants two driveways, the recommendation is to shift the western one so it aligns with the one across the street.
Shift the western one and probably have the other one be one way.
Okay.
Because if you have one way, the not lining up is one way in.
Right.
That the conflict of safety goes away.
I just want to make sure that they don't go to a lot of work and then come back here and say, no, that's not what we had lined.
Biggest question is for her client just to decide if one's sufficient or not, and if it's not, you know what our stance is. Okay. What are?
Our letter would reflect the same thing and typically they they work to not have letters with negative recommendations on it before they come before you.
Right, okay.
And if we have questions, we can work it out with you beforehand if that's fine.
Yep, yep, definitely.
All right, so this evening we need to take action on the modification to waive preliminary plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we recommend to the supervisors waiver of the preliminary plan. Subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, signed it by Mr. Caldwell, that we recommend approval of the modification to waive preliminary plan subject to the staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so that would be unanimous as well.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Amanda. Okay, thank you. Now for the fun. Sign ordinance.
More fun.
All right, so before you, you should have the draft ordinance as well as a one page kind of breakdown of the highlights, if you will, of the ordinance. One of the keys we want to discuss as well is is the purpose of the amendment. And then a quick breakdown as to how we got to this point. I think a few of you were aware and on the planning group, so you have a little bit of background there, but we wanted to provide just briefly how we got to where we are, so. There was recent case law that required sign classifications and types to be looked at based on their type or their construction or perhaps what the sign is attached to, if that's easier to understand, but basically some of the current ordinances in place locally were regulating the signs on their content, which was deemed inappropriate or no longer legal. So you had to come with a way to regulate a sign not stating or not in conflict with the message rather than what is the sign. If it's like a sign that's out front of a person's yard for a contractor's business, that kind of thing, it would have to be called like a wicked sign, not a contractor sign. If that makes sense, so that was one of the main rationales for this amendment. And then two, there was a desire by the board and staff to bring the ordinance into industry standard approach, meaning kind of we interviewed a few agencies who do this for their their business and tried to see what standard, what's common, what's prohibitive and what is helpful to East Tempe, but also to those who want to put up signs for their businesses. So again, like we did with the use amendment that we saw a few months back, we reviewed zoning hearing board cases, reviewed things with staff, the board, the planning group, and then also did interviews with the individuals who come before the board and other staff members for relief and for the actual permit. So we got their view as to what they see other places, what is a stumbling block and maybe some ideas as that they would have to help out a little bit when we drafted the overall ordinance. So what we've done was we sent out a survey to each supervisor and a few of them met with us in person, a few of them responded via email and gave us kind of an idea of where they were coming from and what they were looking for. And we discussed with with multiple staff members to see how permits were handled, what what cases went before the zoning hearing board, and then we reviewed those variances that were common and tried to incorporate those. We met with the planning group, this was reviewed and revised multiple times and was kind of just redrafted each time with a few changes here and there and a few amendments each time. And then ultimately, those revisions were provided to the solicitor. And that's what you've been provided with was that end result draft amendment. That one page sheet that was created has a breakdown at the bottom there of some of the calm highlights, if you will, but it's not meant to represent all the changes, but those are kind of the main points that we took from our interviews and the survey responses and the discussion with staff and the planning group. I don't want to go through all these unless that's of interest to everybody here, if there's anything there specifically, we can mostly talk about them. Mainly, we have changes to the way the heights were measured for billboards as well as signs perhaps along the road out for a business. The duration of how long a message could be displayed was reduced. And also the approval process for a billboard previously was a conditional use hearing. That's been changed to a by right use, if you will, in a few zones with a review at the time that the application for the voting permit is provided. So there's a list of things they have to comply with, which is in the ordinance with some additions. But that approval is handled at the staff level as a review rather than going to the board for conditional use approval. And again, if there's anything specific that we want to talk about or bring out, we're happy to do that.
This entire ordinance only relates to new sign permits, still people that have existing signs up, they're grandfathered in if they don't comply?
That's correct, the only time obviously that that would be changed is billboards that are not digital, that are currently out of compliance, could not be converted to a digital billboard in that same location, so it would have to be a static billboard to continue. If they changed it, it would have to be moved or relocated ultimately to meet the new text.
It talks about billboard dwell time should be no less than ten seconds.
Correct.
I know we've gone through different ways of calculating what the right number was, but it could be as short as ten seconds.
That's the S, it can't be less than ten, that's for well, the the speed limit and visibility is for other signs than a billboard. So billboard is strictly ten.
This is just applies to billboards.
Yeah, the one that lays out the speed and everything, it still has a minimum of ten, but it could be longer if the conditions of that road call for it per the calculation.
You're actually talking two different types.
Correct.
One on a
Free standing.
Digital sign and one on a billboard.
Correct, billboard is 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 even across every billboard. And again, that number currently isn't is once an hour. That was the most commonly heard variance request. And the highest kind of priority, if you will, from the industry people that we spoke with as to that's just too long and everybody else around East Tempeod has backed off the hour. Not everybody's down to this number, but what we looked at Penn dot specs and some other kind of studies, eight was the recommended number, but we went with ten just from feedback from the board as well. So other places you might drive through that are adjacent, they have different times, obviously, but those could be less in other places and still be in line with the Penn dot standard.
So not to belabor the point, but just for clarification, Joshua asked about grandfather. So we have some digital signs, maybe not billboards in the township now. Do they need to comply with the timing calculations and the minimum of ten or are they grandfathered to whatever they want to do?
Well, the idea, I I believe what you're after is if a sign was approved under the one hour limit, they would be able to bump down to the lower time with this change.
Well.
Is that what you're saying?
Well.
A lot of the approvals.
My instance is that there's there's a case now where it's less than ten seconds.
Yes, I think I think you're, that that would be more of a like a staff level kind of, they would need to make that known. But those people, anything less than ten would not be legal and currently is not if.
Right, it currently is not.
Correct.
But in any case, they would fall under these new times.
I think ten was the.
Yeah, I don't know that historic, was that, were there any approvals granted by the zoning hearing board for less than ten?
Sign was less than ten.
I think they're actively displaying less than ten, but their approvals.
That would be an enforcement, enforcement issue on the township's behalf if there was.
But the ongoing, ongoing, it will be ten seconds as a minimum, whether it's a freestanding sign or billboard, and in some cases it could be higher than ten seconds if the speed and distance.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't believe staff would go out and check existing signs that meet the calculation requirement, if you will, to make sure those are compliant. But any sign from here on out would be in compliance. So if they're changing at ten, but the calculation for like a staffers or anybody else would be twelve, I don't think that would be looked at that way currently. But if they came in for like a new permit or a change to that, they would need to comply with with current text.
But if somebody's freestanding sign is changing every seven seconds or eight seconds, they're currently.
They're in violation of existing and proposed, and that would be, yeah, that would be a staff level, someone needs to make contact kind of thing. Does that answer the answer to the question?
Answers my question, yeah. Sorry for taking so much time.
With the way that we have this, just to kind of also future proof it, like that one gentleman that was here regarding the light pollution. Is there any type of ordinance that we're baking into this in terms of how bright signs can be just because?
Yes. It's, it would be a change that is in the current draft, there's a brightness requirement and the kind of like light scattering or how you want to word it has been backed off from the current requirement as well to be more more helpful to a neighbor, if you will, that's kind of how it was looked, that's not much, but it was changed to kind of a standard number that that we saw on other other ordinances and with discussion with one of the board members, that was one of his key points too. So that was looked at, the brightness is a number that we we interviewed an individual who their their company makes these signs, they kind of gave us an idea of what this looks like, how bright is it and what the standard is and kind of what they use. And then we spoke with staff about have you ever had any, you know, any issues with these specifics signs that we know of that were made by this company and there weren't any issues with that. So that was kind of how that that number was achieved.
Thank you.
There's a fair amount of technology to all these signs and they have auto dimming during the day and during the night. They they automatically adjust themselves to be sort of at the optimum level and what we said, when the permit comes in, the sign will be, will be made sure that it's in compliance based on the permit. Following that, it would be an enforcement issue, which is a little, a little difficult, so it's almost self policing at this point. Staff would have to have a special tool to go out and and measure the the light levels of the signs, which isn't for better or worse than something else, so.
And not currently being done either. That's a good point, just to jump on that real quick, through talking with staff and other other kind of the outside agencies, they even offered that they will go through each ordinance and then an individual who would be qualified would give them kind of an okay that this new billboard meets everything that the ordinance requires. And just an interaction with staff. We felt that it's best to just include that as a requirement, so anytime it would come through, a person who knows what they're talking about, if you will, has to say that this meets the code. And then that would help out Nate or anybody else to have to not go out and have to drive around at night or the police have to go out to like, you know, that kind of thing, it happens other places. So here it's kind of a way that, okay, this person is responsible for what they're proposing, you can go back to them and say this doesn't appear to comply with what you said it would.
And and for me, there aren't that many companies that do, especially the billboards, there's only a couple. So and and they, we've interviewed all of them, they're around for a long time. So again, it's it's sort of a self policing on the industry's part of that at that point. If one was out of whack, it would have probably be a technical, a technical problem that was having not intentional thing.
And just so you get an idea, you know, it's it's measured in nits and not too many people know what nits are. But on average, an iPhone is like six fifty to seven hundred nits brightness when it's at full display and at nighttime they're making that be reduced to three hundred. So it's, and and at three hundred nits when it's dark out, it's very visible. But the problem becomes during the daytime, like if you've tried to look at your phone in direct sunlight, seven hundred nits, you can't see it. So, you know, during the daytime, they're up to seventy five hundred nits, which is really bright so that you can still at least see it during daytime.
Okay.
So nits is a thing that a lot of people don't know what that unit of measure is, but that's how, it's basically a monitor and that's how they're measured.
I was just thinking from like a Clark Rizwell type of thing where you got that person. I was just thinking from like a Clark Griswold type of thing where you got that person coming in and that guy.
The the other thing that this language does is removes digital billboards from both the RL and the RM zones. So residential, low and medium density zones, they're not allowed digital signs. Freestanding ones aren't allowed.
Yeah, and as you saw, billboards are only on limited access roadways per this for this ordinance. So that really starts to limit the the potential impact of of a sign like that.
And the fall off from them is not like a street light or anything. It doesn't have that foot candle spread or the lumens of a light, since it's not really a light, it's a screen and it falls off really quickly.
What about for billboards that have lights that illuminate on on them, not self?
You mean like a static billboard that would be there now and there's a spotlight kind of thing on it? Yeah, that's currently regulated. It it's it's allowed. We didn't adjust anything with that. There's, I mean, I don't think there. I'm sure there's a few out there, but I I think the idea here was they'll be moving towards that digital signage. But the current regulations would still apply.
I think it seems like a pretty thoughtful. I don't know. Analysis with all the the techie stuff, but for like traditional building signs that are existing, like I know we had the issue with staffers, you know, being a small business. And, you know, they have, I know East Tempe, I think it's good to have a mix of, you know, your big box stores and your small businesses, too. And there are a lot of people coming to the area who might not be familiar with like a staffers for garden supplies, but they would be familiar with Lowe's. And, you know, I was just wondering if there's an opportunity to maybe eliminate any type of maximum amount of area for square footage for like signs attached to a building. And just being that like, you know, something like a Lowe's, the whole architecture is pretty basically a sign, even though it's not, because everyone knows.
You know what it looks like.
What a Lowe's looks like and a lot of your other, you know, grocery chains, that kind of stuff. For.
Correct. So that that is one of the cases that we used when we looked at kind of the the research, if you will. One of the changes that was made was to eliminate the maximum number of signs that could be on a building. That that area still applies. But one of the one of the cases and more than one that that were to the zoning hearing board were to have more than two signs on a building and that's what it was limited to. So instead of altering the area, it was looked at that perhaps you could have more. You could have more than two attached to a building. And that way perhaps it could allow you to have it on a other side or view a different way. But that area was looked at kind of as a equal playing ground, but also I don't think every every individual that responded to us was in favor of some of the changes already. So it was looked at that perhaps the number alteration was the route to go rather than the area number. If that makes sense.
There weren't, there weren't a lot of requests of the zoning hearing board to significantly expand that.
I don't.
That area.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, and people wouldn't have.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think it's a big, I think what what's proposed.
Yeah, it was.
On what we have.
Yeah.
But I was thinking like, you know, just some places that have more of like, you know, as a township does sort of shift from new development to maybe redevelopment of lots. And maybe trying to reuse architecture creatively, like, you know, a limit on the square footage sort of eliminates the option for like a mural type sign or I mean of like, like a river and company downtown. They've got a massive thing on the side of the building, which maybe everyone doesn't like. But I mean, I'd I'd support a little more flexibility there.
I think it does. Yeah. Yeah, I think your your ideas we did look into, it was just deemed that the the number was the route to go with based on the input that we received and even with interviews from some of the other like agencies, the number seemed to be there, hold up, not the not the amount, I think. And again, it doesn't mean that it's right or wrong, but I think the amount is kind of almost anywhere you go, that's the number you get. So I think your your point is valid, but I think the that number is there to to limit perhaps what other people view as too much. But there is a part of the existing ordinance, I believe, that allows architecture that is like understood. Like you mentioned Lowe's, like it's it's recognizable. I don't think that's currently included if there's no lettering or anything on that to be included towards the total. So if a person went that route.
I wouldn't propose that we regulate big box stores from designing.
Oh, anybody, anybody could have it, but yeah.
You know, I think level the playing field, just let.
I see what you're saying.
A little more flexibility.
Yeah.
Others don't, and that's that's that.
One of the things we were struggling with, and Nick, I think, mentioned it at the beginning of his presentation, was there was, there was a a group that we that we work for that wanted more signage and more flexibility and there's maybe a group that wanted less flexibility. So we had to kind of walk the the line between this and often what we ended up coming up here were a compromise one way and a compromise another way. So it it might be one of those things we said, like in in a compromise, like in the end, nobody's necessarily happy, but nobody's unhappy. So I think that's where we tried to get to with with this, because we definitely had a contingent that wanted that that amount of signage to be significantly reduced. So we didn't necessarily do that. We gave some flexibility in sort of how it can be applied. And we may be limited some other, some other things. So like you said, there were some pressures in in the background that that dictated a little bit how this how this moved. That helps. To propose to expand the amount of square footage would significantly, for better or worse, throw that out of out of whack for us at this point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It would, it would cause a lot. We we think, we think we have a, we have a middle of the road compromise at this point on this ordinance. So again, not everybody's happy, but hopefully nobody's unhappy.
Is there something in in the ordinance regulating like multiple screens with running signs? Do you know what I'm saying?
Motion to it.
You can, you can have letters running across multiple screens. Are those individual signs or is that one big sign?
Are you like, would that be like a sign that would be attached to like a pole or something in the ground beside another one?
Building, running around the building, around.
Okay, yeah, I don't believe digital signs can be attached to a building currently. I I I think they have to be only a freestanding sign to be a digital sign by permit. So I mean, I mean, again, things could happen and they they are there, but I think currently that would not be permitted and that wouldn't have been changed. And I think that even I know that we had that the state road plan that was in that they had their their canopy signs. I think a lot of places are going digital on those. And I think that's one of the things where we heard each side of that, too, like, is that a building sign and can it be digital? And that'll, that'll come down to staff's interpretation. But again, that that may be looked at differently, but like.
When I like driving to the city in Philadelphia, some of those skyscrapers.
You got it, just like, like a marquee almost. Yeah, currently I don't think that's permitted as is in the ordinance. Yeah, and this this ordinance does include some. It's a whole new part, I believe, that is basically for like a medical and and a hospital use because that just didn't exist in the past. So obviously, if there's a new user, there wasn't anything to regulate or allow. So again, we worked with with their their individuals to come up with something that works on each end, but doesn't allow just a whatever you want kind of thing. It's it's not a regulated approach, so.
The section that's in this ordinance was generally agreeable to to Penn State. And we worked with them to try and make sure we didn't put something in place that immediately they would need to come ask, ask for a relief of. So we had, we had worked with with their representatives to make sure this this package had all that in it. And it, they, it was a moving target at best. It it changed up and then we, up to the last second, and it may have changed since then, but we told them they're going to stick with. I think they understand they're sticking with what with what was put in the ordinance at this point, so.
Any further questions? Then we need to take action or make a recommendation regarding the zoning ordinance for signs.
I think it's worked well done. It wasn't an easy task because you had different voices speaking. So I would make a motion, we recommend to the supervisors, they approve the zoning ordinance for signs regulation.
A second. Okay, the motion, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Detter, that we recommend approval of the zoning ordinance text amendment dealing with signage. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, others opposed, so that would be unanimous. Next item on the agenda is old business. Do we have any old business? How about a project report?
You got my manager's report from the last meeting. I didn't have a couple of things I wanted to add. The rezoning at the South Chickies project was approved by the board supervisors. So that's moving forward. We also got recently got plans from Brookside for their 150 unit apartment building. That's going to take a text amendment, which you will see at your next meeting.
Where's that going?
150 units, it's the 55 plus that was on the far east side of Brookside.
Behind sheets?
It will not be 55 plus.
No.
Anymore.
It's in a, increased by 100 or 50 units.
50 units.
And I think it's going up five stories.
That's what the text amendment's about?
Text amendment, yeah, change the height restriction. And then they're also planning a pad, retail plat, restaurant pad next to the sheets that is going to have a drive through and they need an amendment for that as well in the campus zone.
There were Chick-fil-A's coming instead of over Manhattan.
We were promised it's not a Chick-fil-A.
Promises, promises, yeah.
So that's coming in. That was all that I had that I was going to add to it.
Cindy, I mentioned this in our last planning meeting regarding the height text amendment. If if they come in with something like that, that's going to apply to all campus zones.
Yes.
They need to show we, every one of them where it fits, because some campuses are right close to residential. And I'm not in favor of that, so they need to.
They will make.
They need to show me where it's going to apply. Anybody up on Zoom have any public comments?
Nobody on.
Nobody on Zoom. Something else to come before the commissioner beating this jar?
Yes, because they started the sign.
Yeah.
Be happy to tell. They apparently don't like their configuration. They're thinking rotating it 90 degrees.
Probably, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, that's true, Andy's, yeah, Andrew's.
But they don't want the basketball.
So they want, so they can't.
Yeah.
No.
But he said rotate 90 degrees.
So just to pick this whole thing up. Face, they'll face like east, west.
In China or in Germany. Take a super.
Apparently you need.
It's more than, it's more than just two meetings in one.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like all the time. No, that's a full time job. I have no idea what they can fade, but it is. It can't be worth it. It can't be worth it.
Oh, that's the difference, yes.
Supervisors, then you get all these different committees. Like supposedly.
He said it could work, but it would infringe on the.
The two of them, the two of them that were selling would be. But there's this meeting.
Thank you.
See that the court should be rotated.
90. Like if they.
They should go north. Now, tell them what you can do, but they're going to. Somebody's going to be.
Because the, I mean, the tennis courts.
The tennis courts were that way.
I mean, they should be oriented north south.
Yes, yes.
One person.
I would totally not recommend.
Can we skinny up the yeah, basketball court?
That's a regulation size.
His, his regulation size, I think they need. Gotcha, okay.
Looks like they're showing up.
Because I don't really know the personalities. According to to tournament play and and having the Special Olympics there.
That's not true. Yeah, I mean, it can be.
You're making, that was the basketball just.
They want the basketball court to stay down with the, down there. I said, that's not going to happen.
Yeah.
It's moving with you.
Yeah, four pickleball courts and then have.
Have plenty of room.
Yeah, leave the basketball, just tell them if they want the spacing.
But I don't recommend rotating.
Swapping the tennis to the pickleball. Yeah. But tennis will be down there.
We would want to sign off on that if they want to rotate that.
Like you said.
I've done pickleball courts out at Lancaster.
Okay.
I think they only had six.
Oh, really?
That gutter area can be shared.
Yeah, this guy, they just can't compromise at all.
It's out of bounds. I guess if it doesn't, I guess if it doesn't hit. The tennis court share the gutter area. That's 12 foot there, but that's a faster game.
Bigger court, yeah.
I can send you the official pickleball.
I was looking for it. Yes, send me the official pickleball. I need ammunition. Because I've got to meet with him. I'll let him pick the colors.
We can be there when you need to.
Oh, that might happen, too. Yeah.
I'm I'm not a pickleball player, but I do know which orientation court should be in east, west is not one of them.
And and that makes perfect sense. The tennis courts are set that way. That's why. I got a call in back. So I had to check with the board to have how much quicker room ahead.
Can imagine much.
No.
But I I didn't even think about making a smaller basketball court. I mean, I just figured you want it.
Well, we don't have Special Olympics and tournaments there.
I guess the other thing you could do is do two halves facing west, but then again, in the afternoon, that's going to really be horrible.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's nice to at least be able to run one.
Yeah.
If you pinch it up much more, I looked at it when you did, I mean, there's a little bit of fluff over here.
What I did, I, when I did it, I I found the center of the existing between the fences. And then I weighed this out and then found the center, and that's why these are odd measurements all around the outside.
Yeah, so we could, we could probably get a little, like, we could slide this over a little bit.
We could, yeah, six inches this way.
Ten a little bit smaller. You don't need a full ten. It's a fence for the basketball. You can make that small.
That's 10 foot recommended.
Yeah. Yeah, those are all secret things.
Right.
I I wouldn't go any closer than 10 feet because of the safety thing. Like if you made it eight feet and somebody gets slammed up against the fence, you might, somebody would be like, my recommendation is 10 foot.
Where the nets are now for the tennis courts are essentially here.
Yeah.
So they could stay and that would be a barrier against the the two courts.
It could, but somebody might run into it, I guess.
It could, but somebody might run into it, I guess. Yeah.
But you have sixteen feet, so it shouldn't, shouldn't matter.
Yeah, our thought was when we started at least not in play. It's not the same as the other court as the
They and and they thought that, I mean, they're fine with that.
That would've been a whole bunch of trouble.
Oh, yeah. Gee, thanks.
Yeah, if if you have that official
Yeah, the official one.
Yeah, that might
Because I was looking forward to that.
Were they able to find anything for coasters fencing? Because I was here yesterday, they had it.
Yeah, they did find.
Okay.
Does chain link, yeah.
Okay, good.
So the only thing with the bid is the overlay.
Placement of the asphalt.
Yeah. That might be, yeah.
Especially if they come just catching they they put a stone base in. Supposing
That's coasters, yeah.
Everything else poles even, you found, you found the poles.
Yeah.
I told him he needs to find permanent pickleball nets. I'm sure he can find them.
Yeah, yeah, somewhere. We talked about taping out here and I
He he doesn't want to do it. I talked to some, I talked to Russell and he's fine with painting it. Because we have, oh, do over, do it again anyway.
If there is that where somebody just
Yeah, that because they're solid colors.
Yeah. Yeah, the paint, as soon as it got warm, the paint So at the basketball, the existing basketball court, they're not it's there, they're just gonna bring it up? Oh, for the widening? Yeah. I think they would bring, they would bring the new the thought was they would bring the app, the stone, they'd bring a stone base up around. But they're not gonna mill out, they're not gonna I don't think so. Saying it might telegraph there. That's where you put the petromat down to span that gap, so it doesn't They could put, I guess, they could camp a section of basin and then put top bring the base up level with the existing top and I can just see that
That's not gonna
The only way around that would be to Well, the, like, the petromat would span that it's, it's like, it's not going five, it's a woven, but then they put like a I don't know, they put like AC twenty down on top of it and it spans it. But you're still gonna get differential settlement, because the basketball court's been there. In that, in that other sketch, though, is there is there play in the there is on the one court. Yeah, reckon it's right down that gutter one. Yeah. There's a little bit of play on that one. And yeah. And I pushed it this way, because when you go that way, it drops off down. And I figured you didn't want to bring all that fill in, the level, whatever.
That might be less complete than having that line there forever.
Well, you'd have the line on the other side too. Yeah.
Yeah, but it would be out of play.
Send you a center of the court into we can, we can You can put widening, and I think somebody talked about that wide on both sides.
Right.
And just center Yeah. Center the play.
Right.
In the old. That might be the best.
Because you know that that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, you're gonna get and Unfortunately, that one
That one's not a big deal. No, no.
That's a good idea. May maybe you don't even do that. That's just, the overall size is one twenty. So you, and how much, how wide was that at the bottom? Two feet?
But it does go closer to the
So instead of having twenty-one on each side on the, on the back, maybe
You have twenty.
Twenty. It's just, it's a little odd. Yeah, save the cost of that. And then split this on either side.
I, yeah, I think that's what you want to do, because that's
It will, that will become an issue.
And they also, the guys would prefer that these come off the trail.
Oh, that's fine.
Instead of the parking lot, they thought there'd be conflict there.
We'll just center them right between the two.
Yeah.
Between that's three courts.
And they want a a mandor one and then a double one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't know if you saw that, but I had ten foot and then it dropped down to six. You can decide if you want ten foot the whole way around. Most tennis courts come out ten feet, and then in this forty-two foot section, they drop fours or six foot high. Same height, because the balls don't normally go out this way. Yeah. But it's up to the township if they want it to be one ten foot the whole way around. A lot of places don't even put the fence on the sides. On the sides.
No, that would hit the doors.
Well, down here, you would need it, because this would be, this would be ten down here.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't even, well, yeah, you would still need the You'd want a path. You'd still want a path.
Yeah, which would come up
Which is coming off there.
They just didn't like that.
But if you got rid of the fence, nobody would use the doors. Yeah. Some amount of fence on the side is Yeah, it's, that's something to discuss with Perry, if they want to just keep a ten or drop it. Okay, I can update that, get back to you.
Yeah. Stay tuned for the pickleball court.
And I'll I'll send you the layout for the pickleball.
Yeah, because I think I'm gonna end up meeting
Okay.
Good night. I do, but I can't tell you uh because the report's not out yet. Let's see, how did they word it? It was not a truck error. By elimination, you know what it is. Yes. The first one was going two routes, the second was going away. They had just been there. Yeah. They actually looked like the car was airborne, because there's no skid marks. Closes down.